Call this meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Mr. Ellington?
Here.
Mr. Beeselhorst?
Here.
Mr. Beverly?
President.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mr. Mankey?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Mahoney?
All right. We are looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
This is approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's approved. Audience to visitors? We don't see any, all right. We'll go on to recognition of the Illinois State Scholars.
Yeah, we started this last year, will continue it this year. It's kind of a nice honor that I get to do this, and the last time I saw most of these guys, they weren't this big. I know that. But anyways, just a little bit about the State Scholar Program. The State Scholar Program publicly and personally identifies graduating high school seniors who possess superior academic potential. Students from nearly every high school in Illinois compete in the program. State Scholars can be found on the campuses of nearly twenty, or excuse me, 200 public and private institutions of higher education in Illinois. The combination of exemplary college entrance examination scores and record high school achievement indicate an especially high potential for success in college. And so with that, we honor these State Scholars tonight. So, Mr. Ellington here has some certificates. We wanted to tell you guys fantastic work, give you a certificate tonight and recognize you for the outstanding years of school that you've put in here with North Boone. So, with that being said, I'll announce their names and we'll have Mr. Ellington give you guys some certificates. Go this way, because I'm not going to do it.
Oh, big lunch.
Yes, oh.
So, let's start first with Jacob Kinzer. Congratulations, Jacob, nice job. Jacob Kinzer? And Michael Isomarcetti? Did I say it right? Congratulations, Michael. William Perez, is William here too? Emmett Rogan? Congratulations, Eric.
No problems.
Theresa Weiss? Mason Young was also an Illinois State Scholar. He can't be with us tonight, he's got a basketball game, and our last one was Max- Maxwell's book. With that, congratulations, guys. Nice job on the hard work. Parents, we'll give you a second here if you want to take some pictures and let me get out of the way. Congratulations, you guys, awesome job. I don't know if that's supposed to break.
If I have a parent that has a good picture, would you like to email me that? Or would you see it?
Please expect the importance of anyone having that.
What I will do is I'll make sure we put it out on the website. You got it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Great job.
You guys are more than welcome to stay for the meeting. Thank you, guys, for coming out.
We appreciate it.
Good job, guys.
All right. Hi, Bill. Thanks for coming with us tonight.
Did I already miss the audience to visitors?
You did. Yes. We're on the treasurer's report now. As presented?
Yeah, as presented. I think you remember last month, we talked about that there was a discrepancy in revenue and expenses. We did have Mark Olson look at it, and he said it was a timing thing, more than anything, but we are back in rhythm, so as presented.
Any questions on that? All right, then we'll go to superintendent's report.
Yeah, we have a lot of thank yous. Let me make sure I've got her last name right. There we go. Thank you to Mitch Tash. Her mother, Lillian Tash, used to teach here at Capren for 31 years. She gave $275 to the North Boone Education Fund, Foundation, in her memorial. We also have Leola Turner, who also donated to the North Boone Education Fund, so thank you on both of their behalf, to the donations to the education fund. Our librarians were awarded a $1,193 grant from the state of Illinois. They also did a fundraiser out of Barnes and Nobles for about another $804. So, that money will now go towards materials and books for our libraries, so that's a nice contribution there. Jerry wrote a grant from State Farm and won 25 computers for us. Those computers will be put in the middle school lab where Mr. Wesbecker is, and those will replace some of our eight-year-old computers in there, so we've got a nice new lab at the middle school. Boys' basketball team was recognized by the IHSA officials for one of their recent games for their outstanding sportsmanship, so we received a reward for that. And one last thing for the board is we met today and will continue to write for a federal grant for 21st Century After School Learning. We've got to turn that in by February 15th, so we're doing some plan for that. The nice thing about this grant is, is it's not a one-time grant, it is fixed money for the next five years, so if we could get something like that to help with some after-school programming, it'd be a nice perk for the district, so that's all I have.
All right, perfect, thank you. Then we'll move on to committee reports. Policy Committee.
I have Policy Committee, I was going to say, we have not met in a little while, we're due for another batch of policies. We do, we'll need a facility long-range committee meeting coming up, and CIA too, here in the near future as well, so, and I'm sorry, I kind of jumped into it.
Go ahead, get in there.
So, and Business Services, we did meet, and we talked about abating taxes, which will be on our agenda tonight. And I don't know if any of my committee members want to add something.
The other thing that's on the agenda is the farmland rental as well.
Yep, yep.
Let's discuss.
Thank you, Tom.
Anything else for any committees? All right, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right. One second. Motion, second. Roll call.
Mr. Ellington?
Yes.
Mr. Beeselhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mankey?
Yes.
And then we'll move on to unfinished business. Board Self-Evaluation.
No, I just put it on our agenda tonight to recognize that on January 9th, we went through our board self-evaluation, looked at our agreements, also our expectations for both the board and the superintendent. Overall, I thought it was pretty productive, and I don't know if there was anything else that board members wanted to add, so, but I thought the night was very beneficial for all.
Was there anything from the meeting that we need to bring up tonight?
The two things that Laura had put down for our next step was review the goal-setting process, which we have on the agenda tonight, and at some point, to talk about what we want to use for data in the goal-setting process.
Okay. All right, then I guess we'll move on to goal-setting.
Yeah, this one was one that Joe wanted to bring up, so I will turn it over. Is the goal-setting?
As we discussed at the meeting, I just felt like it should be time for us to readdress our goals and to discuss also the measurement for it. I had no specific goals in mind, I just didn't know what the process was for us to begin doing so, and I actually didn't look at our calendar to see what the date is for us to readdress those in the draft.
Let's see, we did, I want to say our goal-setting was in March last year, and that's kind of where we did the board superintendent goals at that point, but I believe on the calendar, let me see what we had except for January, because I think we're kind of at the midway point, is that right? Somewhere in there. So, if the board chooses to, they can look to do different timing on it as well, but March, uh, March, we review the jobs, description of the superintendent, remember, this is not, you guys can change it to anything you want. And actually, this is where we kind of review our progress towards the goals, the monthly agenda, so. But April, when we develop district goals, or? Yes, I think that sounds right. Yep, board develops district goals in April. But you guys can adjust that any way you want to.
Do we have a plan to review them or assess?
Yeah, we'll review them, basically the thing, we want to do an update, I mean, because hopefully, we're crossing off and saying, we've done some of these, and we, then we have to pick new ones. Yeah, like I said, if we want to dig into that a little bit more, we can do it at that meeting, or we can bring it up before then.
With your goals each month, the ones we made in March, I give you guys an update and put more bullets in as we pick things off as the district, so we try to do that each month, so if you have a updated calendar, that's good.
Is there a time we, as a board, will look at, look back a year, I guess, and at one meeting, would we do that?
That should be the same meeting, or?
April?
Mm-hmm.
And before that, would it be possible to all look at examples, or brainstorm a little bit on our own, bring those ideas here, if we want to be crafting or drafting goals?
Right.
Pass that, so it'd be a good idea for us to compare it with some ideas.
Do we want to have a special meeting, or something beyond this for that, is something you're thinking about, or just do it on its own?
It doesn't matter to me, I just, I guess, I think about it, I wouldn't want us to be brainstorming at that meeting, so that we can, in two hours, come up with what are your long goals?
Do a little homework for that one.
Process of us maybe looking at other schools, because some of theirs are, how they're well-written, how the assessments are well-written.
And then we could go back and tie into what are we going to use for data to measure, does that make sense? So, then April is board develops district goals, May superintendent gives plans to tease district goals, and June is approval of performance contractor goals for the superintendent.
Do you have any? I don't have any leaning one way or another, do you want that to be a special meeting? Or do you want to, this will probably be relatively, yeah, and do it and add it to a regular meeting, or do you want to set?
Which one?
The goal, the goal setting.
Goal setting.
I could picture just our first one, especially if we needed to discuss data, and trying to get everybody on the same page, I could picture that being kind of like.
Can we just pick it, put it in April before the meeting?
Do it as like a special meeting in April.
The week or two weeks before the board meeting?
And then bring it to the board.
Now we're good. All right. Let's pencil it down for, whatever, do you want to look at calendars right now?
How about if I walk back in February, we'll set the meeting?
That's perfect, let's do that.
Give me a chance to look at a calendar and remove some dates.
All right.
Uh, did we just combine the board calendar with board goals? So we kind of just?
Board calendar was in the conference agenda.
That was, that was meeting dates. This was more about the one that we just pulled out and talked about.
Yeah, I get it, the one where we kind of follow what we should be doing.
Yeah. All right.
Now, if you think about that logically, your, is superintendent evaluation, with his goals sort of being tied to us, are we going to be evaluating our goals in March, also in superintendent evaluation? What about goals, I would imagine, that we're sort of packing together, where we'll be assessing our goals and how well we met them?
Yeah, any, but we'll set them.
Makes sense.
And that was my desire to discuss board calendar, to make sure that it didn't sneak up on us, and we didn't have one that we're sort of breaking two months behind in schedule.
Anything further on board goals or calendar? All right, we'll move on to new business, January 2018 bills.
Brian?
I moved to approve the bills as presented.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beeselhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellington?
Yes.
Mr. Ellington?
Yes. Item B, resolution abating a portion of the sales tax.
Yeah, as I alluded to earlier, we met January 10th to discuss abating more taxes to offset the CPI. At our business meeting, we discussed and recommended that we abate $235,000 off the tax bill in an effort to try to maintain and keep taxes low. So, our recommendation is for the, to adopt the resolution, and we'll need, I think, somebody to read that, to abate the taxes at the $235,000. That is our recommendation coming from the business.
Make a motion for the resolution abating a portion of the tax heretofore levied for the year 2017 to pay debt service on $9,292,272.20, capital appreciation school bonds, cap series 2003 of community unit school district number 200, Boone and Winnebago Counties, Illinois.
Call that a motion?
We'll second that.
Second, Kinzer? Any discussion? And the number, and that was?
$235,000.
Right. All right. Roll call.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mankey?
Yes.
Mr. Ellington?
Yes.
Mr. Beeselhorst?
Yes.
All right, item C, farmland rental agreement.
We also discussed this at our last business meeting. We discussed the land rate of our farmland and used a formula from the University of Illinois Extension Office, and we are, would like to propose or recommend that we adjust the rate from 243 to 215 an acre for both of our plots of farmland.
Make a motion to approve the rental rate of the two district farmland properties for the 2018-19 fiscal year at $215 per acre.
Say. Motion, second. Any discussion?
Tom, was there any, any discussion on that at the meeting? I'm sorry, I missed it.
I think.
On the farmland issue?
There, the general discussion, and I, because, anyway, I abstained from a portion of that discussion, because I also rent farmland, but there was a lot of discussion about the current relationship we have with the person that rents, and the consideration that he plays with the schools and things like that, as far as timing his activities and things like that, he's a good steward, I don't know, Mike, if you want to?
Yeah, we also talked about the formula which they use to kind of market that, or to set the price for it, and a lot of it's done by bushels per acre, and then what the market price is, because you're looking to strike a balance, so that it's profitable for the farmer, but yet, also, there's some advan- advantages for you having a land as well, so that was kind of, just using that formula, you're trying to look to strike a balance, so it's good for both sides.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mankey?
Yes.
Mr. Ellington?
Yes.
Mr. Beeselhorst?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
All right, move on to item D, approval of 2018-19 calendar.
This is for the student attendance calendar for next year, and our teachers' calendar. Each year, I put it out to all staff members for input. This calendar is really pretty similar to what we've had the last couple of years, a lot of the days, just a couple of the highlights of it. We did push the start back a little bit, I know a lot of people suggested that coming off the Boone County Fair, and just, it seemed like our start date was creeping up farther and farther in August, so we pushed the start date back a little bit on it. We still have the students done with school, just on the Friday before Memorial Day. We shuffled our conference days in February, so that we weren't conflicting with Valentine's Day, so we give everybody a chance to go home with their, with their family, friends, loved ones. The difference with the Spring Institute Day this year, it was April 26th, all the area smaller schools with the ROE are going to work together with an SIP workshop type thing for professional development, so all the area small schools are going to work in April together. And as, if you look at the calendar, one thing that I always try to do is make sure that there's a good balance of days between first semester and second semester, so some instruction is balanced, and you've got a pretty close balance with that as well. I'll put a caveat in there, like I told all my teachers is, I have yet to propose the perfect calendar for anybody, but we tried to do the best we can with what makes sense for, from the input, as well as what makes good sense for instructional labor for students and teachers. With that, that's my calendar recommendation.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the 2018-19?
Make a motion to approve the 2018-19 calendar as presented.
One second. Is there a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there, is there a reason that we don't do this like three years out? Is it not typical that there would be?
We could, we've done it year by year, and this year, just with the ROE, kind of putting some of those twists in, would be one, one reason, we could do it. Some districts do it for the entire length of their contract, we've typically done it for it. The thing I've tried to do the last couple of years is keep the structure pretty similar, so when people walk in, they kind of got an idea of what's going on. But no, you could, we could go farther with that, I was just. Just let me throw one more thing, I was only just said that to you. I did take a look at Belvedere, so that we tried to match some of the breaks, similar, especially Christmas and spring break, because when you've got staff and students that would meet that, but sometimes that, I suppose, I'm matching too.
All right. Any further discussion on the calendar?
Uh, no, it's not one of your personnel, so.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, so now we skip down, we don't have an executive session, so we have nothing to discuss, sort of announcements and other items, and I do have one of those. We were going to talk about the process for superintendent evaluation, or the tool, and we are not supposed to do that in closed session. So, I thought we would stick it in here to talk about that.
And that will be the last real thing I have.
Is there any, as far as the tool goes, is there any tools that anyone wants to look at for the superintendent evaluation tool?
That would be as much.
Yep. Because I just don't know, like I said, you know, it's kind of a basic one we've used for years, that I sent out to everyone. So, if someone has anything they want to change or propose, you know, I don't think anyone's in love with the old one, I don't think anyone hates it, it's just kind of what we've done.
I'll be honest, it's kind of similar to the one they used with Ben Rockton, but, you know, if you wanted to, I could try to reach out to a couple of the districts and see if they've got something else to share. I don't know what your feelings are on this.
Well, I want you to go.
I wasn't looking for any.
I have one, if I can find it at home, that I attended the workshop that they presented at, it was Stillman. I pres- it was not this, it was 2016 conference. And then I actually got the packet, and I went to the South Beloit School Board meeting. I got to the session a little bit late, and they ran out of packets.
Is it the South Beloit instrument?
No, it was Stillman's.
Stillman's.
Yes.
If you'd like, I could reach out to PJ Capozzi, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, he was the presenter. I saw him at both places.
I could see if he would be willing to.
Yeah, yeah, they shared it at conference, so I'm sure he would, would share it, yeah, I'm not sure if I can, I haven't, finding it and having it.
You can email him. But if he can do it, he can email it, and I can get it out. And so what we'll do then, is next month, in the same place, we'll bring it out again, and we'll have that one, and we'll send it out to the board beforehand, and if we want to adopt it, we can go ahead and, because it's not something we have to hold on, this is just what we want to do, there's no formal procedure for this, so if we just say we'd rather use a different instrument, then we can discuss it in open session next month, and then we'll have that to, we'll fill in our own information, we'll use that moving forward in the, march in the process.
Yeah.
It was, it's a little bit similar to what we're using now, it was a constant, like it was a constantly updating, it wasn't a once-a-year thing.
Right.
It was a, it was a evolving document, it was always changing, and they were moving forward.
So we have one of those too, we just don't really use it to evaluate, so it'd be kind of combining the two we have?
Kind of, yeah. Yeah.
Sounds interesting. So, yeah, if anyone wants to bring anything next month?
It was, it seemed to work really well for them.
Okay. I'm not opposed to anything.
You know, they, both the board and the superintendent felt like they're just, there weren't any surprises, they, everybody was, you know, they were talking about it every month.
Okay.
Do you think we could make, if we were to take something and change it, does that also lead to a review of the meeting? How would we go about changing it?
I would rather just talk about it next month in open session, just at the same time, and, because they said, I talked to Laura Martinez about this, this is one thing, she said, no, you have to talk about the tool in open session, she was like, you can't talk about any specifics to people, but she said the tool is a open session item.
Will place some products in the procedure we'll follow? Remember last year's?
Well, like I said, that's why, it's key. Presentation. That's, that's what I'm more worried about, is those things, so, once we get the tool, I'll talk, we'll talk about that next month too, just because, like I said, I think we do want to focus on talking with one voice, and not having, the way we've done in the past, where it's just, here's seven reviews, take them for what they're worth, to kind of sit down and closed, and get a consensus of how we all feel about it, and then present more with one voice, because as individuals, we really don't have any say.
So, if we change it in February, you would be doing it to us after that meeting, to be, the results of which would be discussed in the process in March?
Yeah. It would, and like I said, so March will probably be a fairly long meeting, but we'd probably do that before we present it to Mike. So we just get together in closed session after, I'll compile all the data, and then I might, I'll probably send it out to everyone before the meeting, and then we can walk in and discuss how we want to present it to everything, so, it should be pretty easy. Yeah, I can take care of the logistics of it.
Maybe even ramp out an idea or recommendation. Maybe even ramp out an idea or a recommendation or something with timing, I think when you're talking about. Here's our tool, then how are we using it, timing, and then when are we discussing data?
We're talking about the presentation. We think their presentation of it needs to be more uniform.
The steps would be created, we need to discuss it, edit it, present the edited version, deliver the edited version.
Compile.
Compile the data, then discuss what is, those are the six steps to that process that we're going to be doing in just a couple of months.
All right, is there any further business to come before the board? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good night.